All right, folks, I will bring our meeting to order. We have a combination of Zoom and in person, so thanks for joining us. So this calls our regular meeting to order for June. With that, we will stand and pledge allegiance to the flag and to the outside. All right. Let's see, so we had a closed session and nothing to report, no report, no reporting during closed session. So this brings us back to open session and approval of the agenda. And Gabe, if I could, since Eli stepped out for a minute, the consent, number seven on the consent, has discussion decision regarding emergency intertie. I just want to make sure that that truly is a consent. Number seven on the consent says discussion decision, but in my talks with Eli and Jack, we had that as a consent. So I just want to make sure that the council is still okay having that as consent.
I did talk to Eli about this, so I might pull it, but they decided to take a little. So a few people here.
Okay.
I was okay with it as a consent.
Okay. All right, so at this point, the council doesn't have any substantive changes to the agenda. Any public comment regarding tonight's agenda substantive change? See none, bringing it back. And we have a. You have a first. We have a second. All those in favor, aye. And Jack is an aye, Jack Tuttle is an aye. Okay, so we have, our agenda is set. And just wanted to make sure that we had that all together. So the next thing is approval of the minutes. It looks like all our minutes will be approved or discussed rather at the following meeting. So switch the page to you. So at this point, we will go to council reports and committee assignments. Mr. Tuttle, do you have anything to report on council or on committees or other activities?
Yes, I was part of the Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting on May 26. Exciting news, they have completed the first California microgrid at the airport, and the grand opening is June 22. They also were talking about a handful of solar farms that they have under contract to build this year. Their goal is to import as much clean energy into our grid as possible. Unfortunately, due to some solar tariffs going on at the moment, it's affecting their timelines and their cost is going up. But as of last week, the president put a pause on those solar tariffs. So those projects should be back online for them and should get them installed by end of this year or early next year. A little bit about the Redwood Coast Authority is a great place for rebates, heat pumps, energy efficient items, and will help you buy your electric car or charging stations with rebates. And for more info, you can go to redwoodenergy.org, and that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Ms. Kelly, you have any report?
I do have a couple of things. Very quickly, the Humboldt County Convention of Visitors Bureau meeting on May 12, there was a lot of discussion about Measure J, which subsequently passed. There was mention of the cruise ship that arrived in Eureka and that it had some expirations to the area, like Grand Creek, Blue Lake Casino, and some shuttles to Old Town Eureka. And there are two more cruise ships coming in September. And so I think it would be a good discussion to see where we're exposed to turn that control. So I do think that it'd be better for the chamber to have a representative than a city council member. So I reached out to the chamber and they're going to volunteer someone. Most of the discussion was about, you know, marketing and web hits and getting more visitors. And I just think. On the planning commission meeting was the other thing I attended on 5/18. I just want to point out that the planning commission selected Richard Johnson to continue the charity commission, and Erin Haken will be the vice chair. Tom Hopkins was chosen to represent the commission on the city's trail committee, as you may already know, and Erin Haken for the water advisory committee. Let's see, there were discussions about Jennifer's work on September Septic Square this month, and how exciting and healthy and future meetings we're going to discuss, or they're going to discuss rainwater catchment, signage plans, vegetation management, the tri management plan, incorporation into the general plan, and recommendations for the cities website. I bet you wish I had done, but I'm not back yet. Two more. So the water advisory committee, June 9. We reconvened the water advisory committee on June 9. Had a good discussion about the charter of the committee, the actions taken by the city to source, preserve, and distribute water. We selected a new chair, which was me. And in future topics, we're going to talk about water-related grants, contractor report outs. We're going to talk about what kind of reporting is needed on water, and on water conservation, rainwater catchment, emergency response, and water rights. So we have quite a list of topics. The next meeting, however, will not be until about early July. And then last but not least, I did attend part of the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water Meeting, and it was the part where they talked about the draft MOU, Canibal, CSD, and Bay. And they are going to look at, the MOU is going to cover a mainland extension of basically wheel water, which is a way of saying just move water from one place to the next via MCSD's water system. So they're going to, MCSD is going to review that MOU on July 9, and then Humboldt Bay is going to maybe review the document. That's it.
Any questions for show? And then real quick, on a Zoom basis, is there any way we can see all the people or just the speaker? How's that working for?
Yeah, we can definitely.
Just because, I mean, I see that there are 12, 13 participants, but it'd be nice to see their faces too, in case anyone's trying to get my attention.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This, what is showing is everyone that has their video on.
Oh, I see, I see, so it's not showing. Okay, fair enough. So folks on the Zoom, just make sure you either use the hand raising or, you know, just somehow get attention so that we make sure that you're able to participate as well as we kind of head into this new world. So yeah, thanks for bringing that also, in case anyone.
And Dave Grover is joining the meeting, so just so.
Oh, there he is. Nice to see you, Dave. Dave, do you have any reports for the council? We're doing council reports.
No reports for me this month.
Okay, Jack?
I have just some briefers. I'm going to come back to more HTA information. I did bring the sheet with me, so I'm not going to report out this time, but I will get something for next time. And also, we did move the trails committee meeting. It was supposed to be in July, August, since nobody will be here until I come to it. So just so people know, we'll.
Thank you. I, my two committees that I'm on, either I, they didn't meet or I was on vacation, so I don't have anything to report on HTA or RDEC. But Cheryl and Eli and I met with the Trinidad Ranch Rea this morning and just heard from them some of the various projects that they're working on and just sort of getting that conversation started again. So it was nice to be back in communication with the Ranch Rea and look forward to more in the future. Do you have any to add, Cheryl?
No, I think it was a good meeting. I don't think there was anything that we're new to.
Okay, so moving on then to staff reports. Eli?
Okay, can you hear me okay with the microphone?
I can, can the folks in Zoom hear?
Yes, okay, good. Okay, so the city manager's report, which is included in the packet. I mentioned first of all about the stormwater project, which is progressing. They're currently working on Van Wick Street, and paving will be happening in, beginning July 5, after July 4. And the project should be done by July 12, so a week after that Tuesday. Then the Verizon cell service, I mentioned in there that the cell tower that's on Trinidad has been turned off, that we are functioning off of two cell towers for Verizon. One is off of Quarry Road, and one is in West Haven. So some, there are some pockets of poor cell service that have been reported to the city. And any Verizon customers in the greater Trinidad area are encouraged to contact the city and report any change in reception, so it can assist us in reaching out to Verizon and to make them aware of that. And then the Trinidad Head cell site will be decommissioned once the birding season is over. And then summer solstice, the chamber is going to have their taste of Trinidad. And it's going to happen on summer solstice, which will be June 21. It'll be in Saunders Park, and they have a number of vendors. And they also have music provided by a local group called Fred and Willman. So and there will be food, wine, and beer provided by what I call North County vendors. And the charge is $20. And the community yard sale, Jennifer from our staff had put that together. It was successful despite the rain that day. So 23 residents from, and six from West Haven participated in the yard sale, and rain had held off until about 12:30. So I wanted to thank Jennifer and also Ross from Public Works, who helped with putting up signs and checking up on the residents who've had the yard sale going on. And I mentioned that I had attended the CERA meeting in Sacramento. That was 45 cities from the JPA that were a part of. So six of the seven Humboldt cities, everyone but Rio Del, is a member of CERA also. And then about water, because people ask about water and want an update. So what I have written here, first of all, I mentioned that the water advisory committee had met and addressed a number of issues which Cheryl had mentioned. The city this past month experienced a water loss of over 40%, which is the second month in a row. And on July 6, the California Department of Water Resources, through California Rule Water Association, will be sending a leak detection specialist who's going to test about 2,000 feet of water service lines, four leaks. And then we'll have, there's no charge to the city, and they are going to be doing this in the future again, but at least this is the first one that they're going to be doing at no charge. Also included in our packets, under the consent calendar, are scopes of work, which will be prepared by GHD and SHN regarding the two large grants that we received recently dealing with water, both the emergency intertie and new water storage tanks and water pipeline replacement. As far as the water plant, we're on track to start a conversion from Coleman Engineering staff to city staff. So some of our staff members have been trained recently with Coleman Engineering, and this will all be happening between July and August. And the other thing is Coleman Engineering has used their expertise to make improvements to the operation of the plant. Finished water now shows a 25% reduction in NTUs, which are suspended particles in the water. So 25% reduction. Also increased run times at the plant have resulted in more frequent tank turnover, leading to a more constant disinfection throughout the system, and the use of 5 to 10% less chlorine. So those are both good improvements to the plant. And then the other part of it is encouraging all residents and water customers to conserve on a regular basis. The state is recommending water conservation throughout the state. So we just want to be ready for that dry season. So the more we can serve, the better. That's all I have. I'll entertain any questions.
Questions for Eli? Thank you very much for that report. And at this point, we will move on to items from the floor. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or staff. Council and staff responses are limited for non-agenda. Mr. Morgan?
Hey, nice to be back in the room. How you guys all doing here? It's Wallace, good job, guys. This is about, I guess you guys had a meeting. We saw an emergency came from a lawyer. I have spoken with Eli about some of this. So I just, sorry, I thought we were going to be settled with this last week and all that. So we were led to believe we were up before. Because I probably got this email already, but I want to pop up with the city. June 8, Audenville City Council, City of Trinidad. Not sure which is number. Our rebuilding trust with our city manager, or the city continuously trusting specious direction, apparently authorizing more court action from our city attorneys. Our city manager continuously reassures us, the city is done, and like us, wanted to settle our court actions at a recently scheduled settlement conference and do better next time. The city apparently ignoring common sense, continues to trust specious city attorney directions, and according to our city manager, has authorized new court actions. These new court actions have not led to settling. They are prolonging the city's two-year non-settlement of this case. The new court actions have added thousands of dollars in attorney fees to tens of thousands that the city has already spent on us. For what? More to support and to trust, distrust? Unfortunately, each step forward of building trust with the city is being continuously eroded by our attorneys. Fortunately, the buck stops with you. Much like our beach trail steps, our relationship will always need maintenance. We need your help to finish the settlement and fix the damage from the storm. Sorry, very motionless. So on the day we were supposed to receive this, which is the settlement document filed from the attorney, we received this, which I gave you guys a copy, just to see what I have to go through. So we were supposed to get this. We still haven't gotten the cinema mail yet, it hasn't been served carpet to us. I had to go in and get it on Tuesday, a week ago, from the attorneys. Asked for calls, they haven't called until Saturday. So you're all caught up. We're looking forward, we rescheduled for the 23rd. We're still looking forward to finishing this up, much like we did the first case, which I guess, was Lynam there? And you were there, Gabe was there, and was there. I hope we can do the same thing again. Thanks for your time.
Any other items from the floor? Looks like Paula Levine has her hand up, so please provide your item from the floor.
Well, I have an opportunity to comment on Eli's report.
This is items from the floor. So this is the section where folks are talking about items not found on the agenda.
Okay, so I will be able to comment on it later?
You know what, I forgot to ask folks for questions, so I'm getting used to this new world. So why don't you go ahead and ask your questions of Eli at this point?
Okay. So Trinidad, it's my understanding from speed reading of your report that we've obtained $5,079,000-plus grant. And my question is, how much of that money is for the tank? And how much for fixing leaks?
Yeah, I'm not sure the exact distribution between that. And at the same time, our engineers are preparing the scope of work, and they'll also include in there the estimated cost of each. So that hasn't been broken down exactly. So yeah, as far as how much is for one, how much the other, I don't know exactly for sure, but we can check with our engineers and find out when they can get that information to us.
So when you write the grant, it's not specified? It's just lumped together and to be determined after you get the money? Is that how it works?
Well, they estimated, but it was like a rough estimate. So I don't have the exact numbers. I'll check with them and see if they have some better numbers. But yeah, they estimated what a similar tank would have cost. And of course, when we go out there, who knows as far as the current market and inflation and the delivery of items as far as shipping and so on? So that could all change whatever, you know, an existing plant would look, an existing tank would look like right now.
Could you give me a ballpark estimate?
Again, I want to either ask the engineer or try to have that document in front of me. So I don't have it in front of me to tell you if it's like $2 million or what. But, but, you know, probably it's somewhere between the $2 to $3 million range.
And we have a $5 million grant and a $2 million grant that will both approve for water.
Yeah.
Activities, Paula, so just remember, it's actually somewhere in the neighborhood of $7 million, and it's earmarked for fixing leaks and building tanks, right? So think about, you mentioned $5,700 roughly, and so really think more on the $7 million.
Yeah, this is for the intertie, the emergency intertie.
Right, okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment about why I'm asking this question. I don't think I'm out of time yet. The way the report was written, it says the steel tank is going to replace one of our tanks. And it's my understanding that the tank that is theoretically going to be replaced is not leaking. So we're talking about millions of dollars for seemingly marginal gain. And I'm bringing that up because this is all tied into. Oh, God, I don't know. There was so much hullabaloo about the cost of going one way or the other last year as far as improving our water system. And apparently, whatever way we chose to go would be through grants. I just want to remind the council and the public that if we had chose, if you had chosen otherwise, we probably would not have needed a tank, and we're talking about millions of dollars here. We probably would not need a tier three employee. And as far as the millions of dollars for the emergency intertie, the other choice.
So Paula, I'm going to ask you to either talk about the staff report or ask to pull one of the consent agenda items for discussion, because you're talking about items that are in the consent agenda. And so either focus on Eli's staff report or make a request to pull one of the consent agenda items, which is the, which one is it?
Number six, the water.
Six and seven, yeah.
When you say pull it, what does that mean?
To add that to a discussion item, because right now, we're discussing items that are on the agenda. And that's not what this is for, right? So if either we're going to discuss items on the agenda as a full public meeting, or we're going to focus your comments on Eli's staff, the city manager's staff report. And in his staff report, he does not talk about items number six and seven. We're going to vote on the consent as one vote, approving or not approving all of the items at once.
Okay, so are you saying that I couldn't speak about the consent agenda later on when you call for public comments on the consent agenda?
Yes, you can ask, and then the council will decide whether or not we're going to pull that for discussion. And then there's also one opportunity for public comment on the consent.
Okay, I would like there to be a discussion on number six on the consent agenda, the water storage and pipeline.
When we get to the consent agenda, I'll seek your input. And so if you could, in the time remaining here, if you could kind of organize your thoughts about what you're asking the council to do regarding those agenda items.
I will do that, thank you.
Thank you for letting me continue to try to keep the meeting going following Robert's rules and Brown Act and everything else. So at this point, are there any other questions or comments for Eli's staff report from the general public? All right, bringing it back, items from the floor. So I just want to make sure that we complete this process, this portion of the evening. Are there any items from the floor? Again, items to be discussed that are not on the agenda. I see none. Okay, so that closes items from the floor. Now to the consent agenda, I just want to, for consistency, always read this little preamble here. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion for any of these items. If discussion is requested by any council member, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separate. A single opportunity for public comment on the consent is available. That is what we'll do now. So Paula, this is your time to comment on the consent. And if the council wishes to pull these items for further discussion, we can do so. So at this point, what is your public comment on the consent agenda?
Okay, well, you have to bear with me. I don't know if you've noticed, I tend to have, get anxious when I talk in public. It's much better when I write something.
I just wanted to comment, Paula. So in other words, the consent agenda, the council will vote on the whole package unless something is pulled. So in other words, if you're interested in talking about number six or number seven, then ask the council if they will pull that for discussion.
Yes.
Put on the rest of it and then come back to that item.
I'm interested in both number six and number seven.
Okay, council, do you wish to pull six and/or seven for further discussion?
I guess my initial thought was, could we just really discuss some of these items of the water advisory committee? I'm going to have a look at it or whatever.
I have no problem with pulling the items for discussions.
Mr. Tuttle? Mr. Grover?
Yeah, I'm fine with pulling that. I didn't know if, I mean, if there was a different decision being made or if there was just a point being made that was, you know, not, like, I didn't know if there was going to be any difference, any option or availability for a different action to be taken by pulling it, because I don't have it in front of me right now.
Yeah, I'm fine pulling it if we need to.
Okay, I am going to pull, and let me, give me a second too, to get to the recommended action. recommended action and whatnot.
I also want to just add, you're reminding everybody that we have three minutes during this time for people to be discussing, so. I was also considering moving the, uh, number seven over because I thought about it, I think that's what we want to know more about what that is about, so I, I think that is a, a good time.
So I hear a motion to pull number seven and number six, Jeff? What's your?
I think Paula requested number six, and I would be willing to allow that. And she also said seven, I thought seven might be a good one, just so people understand what's, what the, uh, this intertie agreement is about, so.
Okay.
I, I think Eli can summary of it, take them if you want.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion?
Let's second it.
All right, we have a first from West, a second from Grover. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we will pull items six and seven from the consent and move them to the first two discussion items in the next section. So we'll make a change and pull those two. Any other public comment regarding the remaining items, one through five on consent agenda? Not seeing any little hands on the screen. All right, do we have a motion for the?
I'll move the consent agenda without six and seven.
Okay.
Second that.
First and second on the consent, one through five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. So that concludes the consent agenda, and we will move into now the discussion action section of the evening. Our first item being authorize city manager to negotiate and sign scopes of work with consultants, GHD and SHN for the water storage tank and pipeline replacement grant. Eli, if you are able to, can you give us a, a introduction to this? I know it's a little short notice, but if you don't mind doing that.
Uh, first of all, I'm not sure if Becky Price Hall is on. If she is, then she can also weigh in. But I'm not able to see if she's on there.
She is, she is, yeah.
Yeah, Becky, if, if you want to take a stab at this, you know, this, and I could help with it also. But basically, here we're looking for the scope of work in, uh, in, in this item, matter of fact, both of these items. So that's the, the key focus is the fact that we're doing the scope of work. And of course, the scope of work will help determine probably a lot of questions that Paula's asking. Uh, and then the other question, yes, I'll just turn it over to you, Becky, and then I can fill in if you can.
Okay. All right. So, um, I think part of the question was, uh, well, I don't know, oops, I have my phone on also, I'll make that be quiet. Sorry. There we go. For our introduction to the project or specifically talking about, uh, the budget.
Becky, I recommend you turn your camera off just so that it seems like you're having internet limitations, so if you don't mind. Not your foot on the large screen.
Okay, uh, so my question was, are, uh, um, would you like a general overview of the project or just speak to the budget?
Oh, please, very general overview and then how the, the, the budget breaks down.
Okay, so the, this particular the project is
Becky, we are not hearing you.
Funded by the Department of Water Resources. And it's through this program.
Becky? We are only picking up less than 10% of what you're saying. Is there a way you can just call in?
If I can you? Is this better? Is this better?
Yep.
Look, can you hear me now?
That sounds better. Or no?
Can you hear me now?
Uh, it's not on her, it's her.
Yeah. Everyone does.
Okay, let's, let's try this, I'm sorry. Is this better?
It does sound better.
Okay, okay, I'm now on my phone. So this project is funded by the Department of Water Resources, and it's through the Small Community Drought Relief Program. And it's specifically to assist us with reducing, um, well, improving water resiliency. So the two pieces that the city proposed were replacing one tank with a steel tank that is about twice the capacity. So it's improving the quantity of water, um, storage that we have. It also, uh, the two tanks are old and redwood, and so they're at the end of their life. So a steel tank would, um, improve or reduce the vulnerability, uh, to, of the tanks to, um, catastrophic leak. So that's one part of the project. The other part is replacing the old uh, water line, the, the old asbestos concrete water lines. And the we decided that starting with the largest dimension pipes that are, um, going from the water plant up to the tank would, um, be a, a good way, since we didn't have specific areas that were, um, identified as leaky, we just thought, starting with the old pipes. So that's one segment. The other segment is on Edwards, which were, we've started that with the stormwater project because of the opportunity. So it's, um, water line replacement and the tank. And the budget is, can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so the budget is broken down, um, in a way that's hard for me to tell you exactly which, what amount total is for the tanks. But I can tell you that the, the planning aspects are for all the, all parts of the project, so they, that includes the design, the environmental documentation, which would be the SEQA, uh, and permits. And that's, uh, one figure. Um, it comes out to about $650,000 to do all the planning for the project. The construction, uh, the, the part that's specific to the tank is just over one million for the construction of the tank. It's, um, about two, um, point, two, five million for the part of the water line that's on West Haven Drive, uh, between the water treatment plant and the tank. Part of which is a double line because currently some of the customers that are in that section between the tank and the water plant have to take their water out of that tank supply line, which is, um, a little bit higher chlorinated so that it can reach the far ends of the prod, uh, of the city's water system. So it provides another supply line that's just for distribution to customers as opposed to a dual purpose. So it, um, it just improves the operation of the plant. And the third piece is the Edwards Street Water Line, which will replace the undersized water line on Edwards, and it will also replace the failed water line on Van Wick. That's, um, currently served by a temporary water line that's above ground. So, um, that temporary water line would no longer be needed. Um, and that's kind of the basics of the budget. There's, you know, some project administration and, um, there's what's called construction administration, which is the engineers that are on site during construction and doing inspections. Uh, so I'll leave it there, and then if there's questions, um, hopefully I can answer them.
Thank you very much, Becky, for, uh, sort of like I said, a last minute coverage of that, that really helped. Um, any questions from the council or Becky regarding, uh, this item to authorize city manager to negotiate sign of scope work? All right, any public comment regarding this, uh, what, what this project is for and what we're asking the city to do? Oh, this is your chance.
My cat here. Okay, it's a million for the construction of the tank, uh, six fifty for planning. Then there's the cost possibly of the land to place the tank. Um, the cost of hiring, um, PWA to find the land to place the tank.
Those, those are not included.
Yeah.
Those are not included. The cost of land is not included in this grant, nor is PWA.
I understand, I'm, I'm adding up all the costs for this tank. And I, I just want to accentuate that while one of the redwood tanks are old, it's also old growth redwood. It's in as good a shape or better shape than the newer tank. But the point being is that neither tank is leaking. So in all the discussions of all the things that the city council could do, could have done, decisions made in the past of, of, of what way to go. Now we're at a point of a tank and replacing, um, pipes. Replacing pipes seems a huge priority as far as the water loss involved in the leaking, um, pipes. I, I just want to accentuate that when you add up all the costs of what's involved in the decisions that the council has made to date in the past year. A, a tank, replacing a tank that's not leaking, we're getting 150,000, um, extra gallons of, of.
Paula, I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up, your, your time is up, so I'm gonna ask you to make a, a statement that urges the council to go one way or the other, but really we're talking 20, 30 seconds, we're, we need to move on.
I think the council needs to reevaluate its decision to, um, to develop the upper Leffin Holes, which is not on this agenda, but the fact that this plan is not even going to start until next summer and can, be completed two years out. This is for a tank, and it's, it's going to be a million and a half dollars, two million dollars. I, I think the council needs to go, needs to reevaluate its decision.
All right, thanks.
And, and decide to, um, not go with this, this tank.
Thank you for your comment, I'm probably, um, and that's, you've run out of time, so thank you for your comment. Um, is there any other public comment regarding item number six? To authorize city manager to negotiate sign of scope works? It looks like, Becky, is your hand back up?
I just wanted to make a clarification that the tanks, the tank that's being funded by this is to replace a storage tank of finished water that's at the current tank site, so there's no additional property needed for this project. The tanks that are up the Leffin Holt's Creek are not, that's a different project, so I just wanted to clarify which tank idea we're talking about.
Thank you very much. Any other comments regarding this agenda or questions? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for recommended action, or for, uh, sorry, for a motion.
A move that we authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign scopes of work with consultants, GHD and SHN for the water storage tank and pipeline replacement project.
So guys?
First from West, second from Grover. Uh, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nope, everybody voted in favor, so it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on to number seven, discussion decision regarding Trinidad West Haven Emergency Intertie Agreement and Grant. Uh, Eli, is this also a, a Becky introduction?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start off with it and then turn it over to Becky, but just to give a, a general idea of the scope of this, is this is creating redundancy in our system, uh, and this is our neighboring system. So it's called an emergency intertie, and, uh, it will be utilized only in those situations when either the city of Trinidad's water system or the West Haven Community Services District, their water system has a failure. And then we could tap into the other cities or the other districts' water. And this would be like probably when there is a peak period, uh, during August, September, October, the grant is a multi-benefit drought relief program grant, and that's why it's, uh, also part of that Small Communities Drought Relief Program. And it's intended to, uh, assist in providing this redundancy. Uh, they really like this idea of having the two water systems working together. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Becky, and she can elaborate a little bit on this, or at least cover whatever I might have not mentioned.
Uh, so that was the, the basics of that, um, of what this grant is for. I'm trying to think if there's anything to add. Um, so what will be involved initially is to complete an agreement with West Haven uh, that covers both, um, completing this, the construction part of the project, but it also covers the operation and maintenance of this, um, intertie pipeline and into the future, um, just so that everything is, um, understood between the parties, uh, who will maintain, who pays the cost. And it, it's generally going to be, um, shared, shared maintenance costs. And, um, um, West Haven Community Services District would be essentially the lead on the project, and the city would be in an advisory and sort of partner role. Um, so in this consent, or in this agenda item, um, what we're asking or recommending is that the council authorize the city manager to, um, negotiate and sign the scopes of services for, um, GHD, the city engineer, and SHN, the city planner, um, to the city planner, um, to be in that advisory role throughout the project. And um, let's see if there's anything else to mention. Um, I, I think it's worth pointing out that the two parties have agreed on all the basics, and I'm sorry that we don't have um, the draft agreement. It's um, there's a lot of edits that we're making to an agreement, we're using an agreement um, from Lake County for an emergency intertie. And so there's a lot of edits to be made, and we weren't able to get a clean copy. So um, hopefully we'll have that for the next council meeting. Uh, and so if there's any other areas that you would like me to um, describe in more detail, please let me know.
If I could just add, because I've been in these discussions as well with the two districts and with the engineers and whatnot, that um, as you mentioned, this is not a new idea that Trinidad has come up with. We're using existing agreements between other communities because that's a trend that is happening around the state. So that's a well sort of vetted effort is to bring these emergency interties into play. And one of the, the sort of the unexpected benefits, from my thought anyway, is that once this intertie exists between the two cities' water sources, um, there also will be fire hydrants along that intertie, which gives us the added benefit of fire safety in the West Haven area, West Haven and Trinidad area. So that's an added benefit that this project is coming with. So any questions from the council regarding the emergency intertie?
I think it's a good idea. I wanted to.
Other questions, comments from the council? All right, a public comment for this item to basically authorize the city manager to start working on the intertie, emergency intertie. Any comments? All those, your hands still up? Are you forming your thoughts? Have you formed your thoughts? You have three minutes.
So this, uh, accepting this is just authorizing Eli to work on the um, the agreement?
Yep.
Okay. No, obviously um, the definition of emergency needs to be worked on. But no, I don't have any uh, um, anything to say about it. I, I suppose that you will go ahead and accept it.
Any other public questions or comments regarding this agenda? All right, bringing it back to council. Do we have a motion regarding item number seven?
I'll move to uh, accept the, or have, accept Trinidad West Haven Emergency Intertie Agreement Grant.
Plusing the city manager.
I'm sorry, I'll authorize the city manager to accept the, West Trinidad West Haven Emergency Intertie Agreement Grant.
Now a second, yeah.
And Grover is second. So all those in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you for that discussion. Moving on to now the.
Take it pause for a moment. I just wanted to ask Becky. Uh, Becky, do we need to do the portion regarding the scope of services for GHD and SHN too?
Uh, yes, that would be, we would like, um, if it's pleasing the council, we would like authorization for Eli to negotiate and approve the scopes of services for GHD and SHN. And this would be um, according to the scope of work in the project. So it's not looking to do anything outside of what has already been approved by the council.
I will do this.
Yeah, let's, let's start.
I'm gonna authorize the city manager to negotiate and approve the GHD scope of services for the um, the grant support and not, not to exceed fifty four thousand. And authorize the city manager to negotiate and approve the SHN scope of services for the MBTRP grant uh, support not to exceed six thousand.
Second that.
All right, first and second, thank you for clarifying that. Sorry, Gabe, although you were dumb for, I'm gonna do that twice. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Right, passes unanimously. Moving on to item number one, discussion decision regarding second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash O two, Organics Reduction and Recycling Ordinance. So for those of you looking at the packet, page forty-three of ninety-six. Eli, do you want to take this one and give us a preamble?
Sure. So this was brought forward at the last meeting, and we're bringing it again now for the second reading. This is regarding organics reduction and recycling ordinance. Uh, as was mentioned previously, the city of Trinidad has been able to get a five-year waiver from uh, from, from some of the things that need to be done for this purpose. That this is to help reduce the uh, waste that ends up in the uh, street, in the trash uh, street. And as a result, the county is currently looking on a global scale, meaning global in the sense of the whole county. So the whole county is working with Edgar and Associates. And it was mentioned just recently in the media that they're looking for a site to build a composting center that would serve the whole county. So this goes along with this, uh, like I said, we do have a five-year waiver, but there are still certain requirements that will help redirect food waste. And if there's any voluntary, uh, you know, efforts by local businesses and residents to help with composting and also redirecting the food waste, which ends up creating methane in the landfills. And as a result, contributes to global warming. So this is the purpose of this particular ordinance is to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three, which was approved by the state legislature. So I'll entertain any questions or comments that anyone has.
And there were no substantive changes required or requested, rather, from the first reading. So this is in essence the exact same that we had on March twenty-fourth.
Exactly, yes.
Just want to make sure that's clear. Any further questions, comments on the, on this ordinance from the council? Any public comment on uh, organics reduction ordinance?
A quick question.
Yes.
You mentioned Murphy's might be involved with the, in this case.
Yeah, that, that's the only one that would be involved during this cycle would be Murphy's.
Not the earlier sixteen.
Right, yeah, yeah. The, the other, for some reason, the verbiage in there indicates restaurants with over two hundred and fifty seating. I haven't personally been in a restaurant that large, but uh, so yeah, that's why those aren't included. And in the case of Murphy's, because they are over ten thousand square feet. But yeah, being a small community, that's correct.
And the school doesn't, I'm just thinking, the kids, there's a hundred and eighty kids at the school. And if they all came and ate lunch with the staff, they're getting close, but the school is exempt from this?
Well, it wasn't included in this, but after the five years, it would kick in.
Okay.
But the other part of it is, once they get the composting center set up in the county, it, it would be a great thing if we can, you know, between residents and businesses and the school, you know, to burn the food waste. And then at the same time, people can even do their own composting in their backyard, and it's good for fertilizer.
Yeah. All right, so any other public comment on this item? Okay, so bringing it back to council, do we have a motion regarding the second reading of ordinance twenty-two O two? I was gonna take it from Jack, he's gonna get.
I'll do it again. I, we're gonna wait, I recommend us to await the full reading and adopt a second reading of ordinance uh, two thousand twenty-two O two by title only establishing the organics reduction and recycling.
Second.
First by Wes, second by Kelly. Sorry, David, you missed out on that one. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Uh, item number two, discussion decision regarding first reading of ordinance twenty-two O three Tourist Occupancy Tax Ordinance Amendment. As I traditionally do, I will recuse myself from this and ask the mayor of Pro Tem to take over.
Okay, thank you. So we're, as he says, it's the tourist occupancy tax ordinance amendment. And uh, and I think Eli has the information for this. I'll let him explain what we're doing.
Okay, well, uh, yeah, we, we are modifying the existing ordinance that we have regarding the TOT. And we had the law firm of Mitchell, Mitchell Law Firm work on this. And Karen Roebuck is with us on the Zoom call, so I will turn it over to her since she was able to put this together.
Thank you, Mr. Napa. Um, the council may recall that in April, it directed staff to uh, review, consider, propose amendments to the tourist occupancy tax. And so that is what we have done. This would, if approved, this would be a measure to go to the voters. And it is a general tax, which would mean that it is, uh, the revenues are placed into the general fund and are available for expenditure for any and all governmental purposes. Uh, the funds are not devoted to any specific purpose. It would need to be approved by a majority of the voters. It would raise the tourist occupancy tax rate from the current eight percent to twelve percent. Although the effective date of the ordinance itself would be prior to that. Uh, we are recommending an operative date for that twelve percent of April twenty twenty-three, April first, twenty twenty-three. This is to give the operators sufficient time to uh, be able to adjust to a new tax rate. And having it on a, the first of a new quarter would allow them to uh, uh, report and remit on a quarterly basis with the new rate. The eight percent would continue through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. The, there are some other recommended changes to the ordinance in addition to the tax rate increase. Um, some of the definitions are updated, most notably to become a little more contemporary. Uh, we now define an online travel company and then make reference to both a booking and managing agent um, in terms of the operator, just to become a little more contemporary with how a lot of reservations are made. Um, there are other, I don't know if anybody wants to go through it line by line. There are other modifications to um, make some changes to the appeals process, the record keeping, clarifying the refund process, removal of criminal penalties for the violation of the ordinance. I would like to note a couple things. Um, one is that one of the recommendations for today is to introduce on first reading by title only and submit to the voters. Uh, cities do apparently do this a little differently. Um, and not every city that's going to be submitting a measure to the voters will do an introduction and first reading. However, we felt procedurally, uh, that was the best way to go. But there won't be a second reading. What would essentially be, um, happen is it would be voted on by the voters. If the resolution is adopted by uh, the council, then it, the election would be consolidated with the statewide election in November. And it would be to the voters because this is a general tax. It is simply a majority vote by the voters that is needed. I would like to point out, unfortunately, there are three typographical errors. And um, in the resolution on section two, which is on the second page of the resolution, there's a transposition of numbers in the government code section that is cited in section two. And it should be five, three, seven, two, four. And then in the ordinance itself, and I think you have in the packet a copy of the ordinance, and then the ordinance is exhibit A to the resolution. In section one, approval of tax rate increase, it reads the qualified votes of the city of Trinidad, and that should read the qualified voters of the city of Trinidad. And then in section five of the ordinance, compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, there's an errant lowercase e that should be stricken. So my recommendation is that uh, if any council member is going to make a motion in regards to the resolution and the ordinance to take into account those typographical errors that need to occur. Does the council have any questions?
Any questions by anyone on the council? Uh, no, it looks like we have, have any questions. Uh, Eli, do you have anything you wanted to add to this or?
Oh, no, I, Karen covered it very well. Now, we do have the two agenda items here where this one is the first reading of the ordinance. But like she mentioned, there's no necessary second reading since it is going to the voters. Uh, so we could adopt it. And then the other one is the resolution um, calling for the election to increase the TOT from eight to twelve.
We'll need to discuss that.
Yeah, so we'll do that next.
Okay, so right now, we're just looking at the first reading. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry. Absolutely. I was gonna do that next, but like.
I have a question. Any questions and comments? It's still, all right, so this for the attorney under three twenty, one twenty, just below refunds. I don't have page numbers on here, so I can help you. The pages in. At the bottom.
I believe it's page thirty-eight.
Are you ready?
Go ahead.
So I'm just a little confused. It seems like the tourists is on the line and the operators on the line in the same circumstance? And maybe I just need clarification. So on the second sentence, any such tax collected by an operator, which has not been paid to the city, shall be deemed a debt owed by the tourist to the city. So let's say, it seems like you're saying that even though the tourist has paid me as an operator, they're still liable. That's how I read that. And then in the next sentence, any such tax collected by an operator, which has not been paid to the city, shall be deemed a debt owed by the operator to the city. So it's like you're keeping the tourist on line liability and putting the operator, which it seems like if the tourist gives me money and I says give to the city, sure, I would be liable, but their liability would seem to end. Did I just read it wrong? Or what's the thought?
And Mayor Pro Tem West, would you like me to address that?
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you. Uh, this language is uh, continues from the ordinance as it exists. And yes, we do believe that it, the, the meaning and the intent of this portion of the ordinance is that any tax collected by an operator, which has not been paid to the city, is deemed a debt owed by the tourist to the city. And any tax collected by an operator, which has not been paid to the city, shall be deemed a debt owed by the operator to the city. So it is a debt either by the tourist or the operator. And um, we would just. it is a debt either by the tourist or the operator. And we would just simply hope that all parties do pay as appropriately. However, if, if not, then we would address how that would go about being collected.
So now we recommend we strike that second sentence.
Did you hear that?
I, I'm sorry, was, was there a question to me? And I apologize.
Yeah, so my, my question was, we strike that second sentence. It says, any such tax collected by an operator which has not been paid to the state shall be deemed a debt owed by the tourist to the city. It doesn't seem to make sense to, to, the operators collecting the tax for the tourist, it doesn't, the operator, so I, I'm going to strike.
Basically saying somebody has to collect the tax. If the, if you don't collect it as the operator, you're going to pay it yourself, is, is the way I interpret it. So, so that's why operators collect taxes, so that they don't have to pay it themselves.
Will you need more clarification?
So.
Yeah. Do we want to, do you want to go back over that? Or Cheryl, are you clear about what? I'm, I'm the same way. I'm not quite sure I'm clear about what you said.
You're asking sparse carry out, going over.
To be, I'm sorry, is, is the council, and I'm having a little trouble hearing, are you wanting me to readdress this? Or is it appropriate at this time for me to do so?
The suggestion was that the second sentence be removed, if you felt that that would work. The one that's referring to the tourists.
So it, it's, my recommendation, the concept is that both the tourist and the operator shall be jointly and severally liable for the tax until collected. And so the point is to have somebody on the hook for the tax. So we would recommend that that remain in.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other questions from the council about this? Or, excuse me, from the public, the council? Any other public comment on this item? I, I don't see anything, so I'm going to bring it back to the council. No, we have.
Did you have another comment, Cheryl? Or was that?
My comment was a little more general. It doesn't work. But mine was more about the increase from eight to 12% of the ordinance itself. It was just that, you know, I was thinking, the only reason not to increase it from eight to 12 is because right now we have economic shrinkage. And so, economic contraction. So there was high inflation and people are very, um, fast for businesses. However, I think that 12% would align us with what the county is doing overall. It would also kind of bring us back to where we started, where we had increased the tax to 5,000, so it gets us back on a period. So I just wanted to point out that I am sensitive to the fact that there is much of a joint.
And remember, this is our first reading of this ordinance, but the next thing, it does still to, there's got to be voters. So beyond this, it would be, it'll go to the election for the T O Ts, which we'll be discussing the next item. So.
So this is our last chance to make a catch.
This is a change. And so we have a number of changes, but I think we've, are there, if there's something else, what we'll need is a motion in order to move on. So is there anyone willing to make a motion? Please remember that they want to have us take account of the edits that were taking place. I think our number of edits still to be clear. We have a motion.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, that we waive the second reading and that we make the proper textual fixes. There was grammatical errors or something with the text. And that we accept that. And at that point.
So we're, we're looking at accepting the first, is to the first reading of this. I'm quite there. Just wanted to make sure that the reading clear on that paper.
Yes, waiving the full first reading, waiving, and, and making the necessary grammatical changes that she had mentioned, the typos.
Great.
To add that to it.
So we have a first and a second. So did you get everything? Okay. Okay. So all on paper.
Aye.
Fine.
All right, passes. And we're going to move on to the next item that's tied in is the discussion decision regarding, or we have revenue from 2022 to 10, calling for an election to increase the tourist occupancy tax rate from eight to 12%. Glad we got this.
Yeah, well, I'm going to turn it over to Karen again. She prepared this. So yeah, this is regarding the general election that will be in the fall, in, in November. So I'll turn it over to Karen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Napa. What the resolution does is submits ordinance number 22 dash O three to the voters at the November 8th election, request the election on the ordinance be consolidated with the statewide general election. It sets dates for and against the proposed tax measure. It sets dates for submission of rebuttal arguments, authorizes the mayor pro tem to submit a written argument in favor of the measure on behalf of the council, request the city attorney prepare an impartial analysis of the measure, and agrees to reimburse the county for the cost of conducting the election on the measure. I would also recommend that we, that the council, if a motion is made, do a roll call vote. Two thirds vote of the council is required when submitting this tax measure to the voters. So I would ask perhaps the city clerk to confirm if two thirds of the vote was on the first reading of the, an adoption of the ordinance. And I would suggest, recommend a roll call vote if a motion is made for this resolution.
Thank you, yes. Thank you very much. This is going to come back to the council for any questions or questions you have or comments. So any council member have something you'd like to ask? Oh yeah, go see. How about, is there any public comment on this? I see no public comment, so it comes back to somebody wishing to make a.
Get the city council, the clerk to confirm first about the last one.
You got that, Dave? Yeah, so I believe what Miss Robuck questioned was that we do a, a confirm the roll call vote, is that right? For the last agenda item for the ordinance?
If you could, please.
Yeah, okay. So I, I can confirm unless we want to go through the roll call vote motion that I heard, but it was a passed four to zero with one recusal, which was Mayor Ladway. Do we, are you recommending we do a roll call?
Yes. Why don't we go ahead and do a roll call if, if you don't mind, just to make sure the record is clear.
We'll start with, so we're, we're going back to discussion item, very good, number two, to adopt the ordinance. And which was waived, the full reading was waived and read by title only. So we'll start with council member Kelly. Grover?
Aye.
Tottle?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Now we'll go back to item number three. And I think we've, we've done everything. We asked everybody to make any information they have. So let's go to, uh, somebody making, willing to make a. Uh, two. Thank you, motion.
Start first. I will to, or make a motion regarding the resolution 2022 dash 10, calling for an election to increase the tourist occupancy tax rate from eight to 12%.
Do we have a second?
May I interject for a moment? I'm not sure I heard that, was that motion including all the typographical errors, the grammatical errors be corrected as discussed earlier?
Yes, so that, that motion was to approve, as I said, the inclusion of torture.
Have a second.
Tagged.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. And we're gonna, we should do, we want a roll call vote on this one too. So please. Okay, so we got a first by council member Kelly, seconded by Grover, and we'll go straight to the roll call. Councilor Kelly. Grover?
Aye.
Tottle?
Aye.
And Wes?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Thank you very much for helping us out.
And, and. That's it for me too, I think.
Okay. All right, David. Thank you.
Thanks. And tell, give Steve my regards. He can sit back now.
Everything. All right. We're going to have, we're going to now have a continuing discussion and presentation regarding the 2022, 2023 budget. And we also get Mayor Ladway back.
Thank you very much for taking over.
Well, thank you for letting somebody else make a motion, so.
That's what it took. Give you the gall. All right, let me bring up budget. At this point, I believe we will turn it over to our fabulous city staff for a budget presentation, or continued budget discussion. So Eli and/or Gabe, please take it away.
Okay, I'll just start a little bit. So we, we, like you said, it is continued. We started at the last meeting, talking about the budget. And, and then at this meeting, we're going to delve into some of the numbers. And then we'll have a, a second meeting in June, in two weeks, where hopefully we can finalize the budget and then approve it. So I'll turn it over to Gabe, and, and then I can weigh in as needing.
Thank you, Eli. So, of course, I think I bit off a little more than I can chew getting these higher meetings off the ground and then trying to get the budget at the same time. Luckily, we've got Joey here, who made it a little bit easier for me, but this added a little bit to the, to the stress level. So my goal was to have a draft budget ready today. So I apologize if we've got to take it to the limit next, at the end of this, this month. Um, you know, I, I put a little narrative together, just put some things in words up this afternoon on the packet, which I'll use to kind of keep me focused for the next several minutes. But you wanted to see some numbers too. So I figured that would be the second part of our discussion tonight is, is looking to see how, you know, how, how this process is made. Um, so I started probably, you know, the last four weeks, two weeks specifically, was sort of a realignment of a lot of expenses that show up in our, what we call this general ledger, which is where all of our invoices get coded to. As you know, we've hired some new folks this year. You know, the, the work has been delegated. We, we've made, we've spent a lot of money. We've got a lot of invoices coming in for consultants. And, and when invoices pass through a lot of hands, you know, I'd say in the past, I had the luxury of being, you know, the one person that did everything. So I had pretty high level of confidence when it came to looking at our profit and loss reports every month, knowing that things were put in the right spot. But we've had a lot of, several inflated line items in our budget. That to my eye, when I saw them, I thought, wow, that, that can't be right. But, you know, a lot of them were right. But I had to do a lot of double checking, because that's going to be part of our audit process this year, looking at, at how well and aligned our budget was. So, you know, this, this, I'm sharing my screen right now, so anybody online can kind of follow along. But I'll just make a couple of comments. So at the May 24th meeting, we focused on the city's financial structure, and the tools that we manage, that we use to create and manage the budget, how the priorities that the council set in the past and present influence where we are today. Um, I, I put on here, ideally, that the city should be performing tasks that align the budget throughout the year, ensuring invoices are coded correctly. And the city clerk's office with support of the grant administrator in this town function as what, what you call the controller. This past year was a transition period requiring key staff to shift duties and due to the resignation of our water plant operator and public works director in September. Eli spent a lot of time finding and recruiting water plant operator, and I switched to a real serious kind of human resources role. I T in public works and new employee training. And these, these, these adjustments that we've made had to sideline us from a lot of our typical duties. So this has been a real kind of unusual year for us. And we spent the last few weeks reconciling some of the budget numbers that we found. And some of the thing, one of the things I found is that the general fund is, has kind of remarkably sustained a healthy flow of revenue as anticipated. But it's showing signs of plateauing. So, you know, and that, and I'm guessing that it might occur, and I'm, I'm not an economist, but I do pay attention to the news. And I'm, I'm kind of thinking that what we're seeing is going to plateau in October and December of this year. And I, I think this is what I'm kind of getting to is what, what Mayor Ladway wanted to see, what was sort of our sustainability for the next couple of years at this sort of staffing level that we proposed at the last meeting, which is to include some new folks, including somebody that's going to take on, perhaps someday take the reins for the grant administration position. Let's see. So occupancy tax will fall short of the June 30 expectations this year due to our tax rate issue and also non issuance of several vacant permits. We've got four or five, maybe now, permits that we're just kind of sitting on. And those mean money. And if we don't issue them, that means, you know, that there's not a, you know, revenue coming in, but it also means that there's less rental market, which is also kind of sort of the Trinidad admission. But Verizon is, plans to be completely off turn that head by July? Do we know? Do we have an exact date?
No, not, not an exact date. They're doing some studies regarding the birds out there. So as long as they're not nesting in those trees right around there, then they'll be able to start to condition.
So I don't know what that means for our rent payments, but I, I'm not planning for any revenue this year from Verizon. You know, like, you know, for several, for many years, it was around, you know, $2,000 a month. But then, of course, during the holdover period, we're really raking it in to the tune of $6,500 a month. It's now down to $4,500 a month because the, the, the co-locating carriers, AT&amp;T and Sprint have gone. So I don't know where we're going to go with this. How, but I'm not budgeting any revenue from Verizon from July 4th. Interest earnings are, have declined considerably. I, we, for the last few years, we've had some banner years in interest, to $25,000, $30,000 of the city's revenue come. So I, I'm thinking half, but maybe this year. And we're still not sure when the county auditor will release the city's property tax payments. We still have this. And my understanding that there's been an issue or a lawsuit filed by the city of Eureka to, against the county auditor's office to have that money released. We're not really in a, in a bind right now without that, but it's very unusual to be sitting in June and not having any property tax payments, which is roughly our third biggest revenue source.
That's in the neighborhood of about $110,000.
$120,000, yeah. Sales tax is showing good signs of yet another banner year at the close of 2022 and June 30th. Um, sales tax is showing good uh signs of yet another banner year at the close of twenty twenty-two and Ju- June thirtieth.
Can I, I'm sorry to do this, but um, when you said that the interest earnings are down, is that because we're drawing on so much of our, of our savings?
Yeah.
For the water plant and so.
Two things. One, we've got a, you know, quite a bit of money out right now for our savings in LACE, which is the state investment agency. They're, they're, they're pros. They know what they're doing. And, and they seem to somehow weather the storm when it comes to interest. They're so diversified in terms of their investment portfolio that um oftentimes the county treasury is, is usually kind of underperforming LACE. Uh, they're pretty good over there too. Clerk's office, but uh, yeah, so that's it. Part, we've got a lot of money drawn out, but we're all, which could be a good thing too, because we're not losing as much.
Right, right.
You know, but we're gonna put it back in here pretty soon, probably in the next, what, six months?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. Well, we already put some back.
We put some back, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and then, you know, kind of moving on to sales tax, I'm, I'm seeing a banner year in sales tax just this year alone. We're probably gonna receive another twenty or twenty or thirty percent more than what we had budgeted for last year, which we always under budget sales tax, but you know, the cost of goods has gone up incredibly. So sales tax is perfect sense, right? So you're making a lot of sales tax. Um, but I'm expecting that spending at some point is going to hit the wall. You know, people are just gonna say, well, you know, especially if gas prices keep climbing. Come fall, when we get back to our kind of, you know, fall, winter, when it's just kind of the locals kind of feeding the economy here, I think that, you know, we might see. Couple of notes here. What we've learned from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, losing a long line of institutional knowledge can be very expensive um with the result of Brian. Price tag of losing a water plant, public works director combo is forced us to have to reflect on many things. Cost of operating a small water system and to the importance of maintaining healthy reserves. And staff are going to see. So um, and, and the second thing is due to requests made by the Rantree, of course, to receive water, the drought conditions, the water plant director and support staff resignations, that was our guide mark, um, and the demands made by the greater Trinidad area for us to look inward and focus on our small water system. Um, our budget priorities last year were to focus on water. We didn't try to like go tackle, you know, everything we possibly could because we knew we had a lot of stuff going on. So we focused on water. That attention, this, you know, kind of my assessment of this, that attention required us to, uh, requiring us to nurse this system on all fronts turned out to be very expensive. We've got, now we've got several engineering firms looking, looking at the water system. We've got, you know, our interim plant operators who are pricey. Um, Eli has taken on the role of, you know, doing water plant director jobs in terms of kind of facilitating and coordinating communications now, which we didn't really have that issue in the past. I've taken on public works director roles um and even spent a lot of time, you know, working within the city's water system, answering questions that of, of things that Brian, you know, is no longer around, Gate might know. So we've all sort of turned our attention to this water system, which has totally elevated the expense related, I mean, all across the board for us. So um, you know, our water system now really expensive monster to, to operate and to take care of. So that's something that I think is going to carry into next year as well, until we can get things ironed out, get, get our plant back to us and, and build that with that knowledge base. So that, this system is going to be a little bit more expensive from here forward, which we'll talk about in a few minutes when we get to the waterfront. Um, and then technology. Now we're increasing our demands on technology. We've got this stuff here that you see before us. We've got Joey here right now, who's totally affordable. But um, you know, he's my go-to, and then I've got to pick up the ball where he, you know, I've got to learn this stuff. Anton's got to learn this stuff. Jennifer's got to learn this stuff. So as you can see, the spaghetti on the floor is continuing to grow and, but, you know, it's not just us. It's, it's, it's every layer of government now has converted to this sort of tech central uh tech-focused system. So all these things require people. One person can do it all. Uh, it requires a larger staff, and that's kind of what, what I'm seeing is, is, is the direction that we're going. So um you know, doing, the price of doing business is increasing, and the flip side of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two will be not only maintaining a focus on developing and retaining staff, but also to optimize the revenue sources that keep our expenses in check, you know. So we've got to now really kind of turn inward. Everything from our water rates, hopefully we'll get to a water rate analysis this year. But we've also got to look at, you know, just all of our, all of our revenue sources and, and trying to find a way to have a big staff, but all, have a bigger staff to, to accomplish all these missions, but also to get to carrier pay because we want to be sustainable. So um I think staff development is a big priority, a, a big recommendation. If you want to keep carrying out the city's objectives, so this is the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, everything from maintaining our assets to maximizing grant funding opportunities to supplement capital improvements, that's huge. That's what Becky's doing right now. And that's what hopefully her replacement, I even hate to say that, but you know, she doesn't want to stick around forever, but we need to find somebody that can kind of learn the ropes before she decides to pull the plug, you know. Um, so over the last few years, the city has been able to add uh general fund reserves. We've been building our reserves because we haven't been spending as much because we haven't had either the, the staff or we're just um, you know, just, just, we've been building every, uh, and the revenues are coming in a little bit more robustly over the last several years because we've had all this injection of revenue in the economy. So um, you know, we are lucky enough, and we have to look at the last three years to really be able to see kind of the sustainable picture going forward. I, I'm, I'm thinking that just my assessments of everything, talking to the auditor, you know, the city has, has piled approximately, you know, three hundred thousand dollars over the last three and a half years. Just kind of based on underspending. I think we thought we were going to spend more. We wanted to do more. We wanted to paint the town hall. We wanted to work on our trails. We wanted to um, you know, hire a swap crew to really help us doll up, you know, some area of town, but um, we, we just didn't get around to doing this stuff. Uh, because we started dwindling our staff and burning out the staff. So we're in this transition period and um that's kind of where we're at. And then the water fund, uh, switching to the water fund real fast. The um the, the fund is running a structural deficit relative to the cost of keeping the lights on and running the system and the cost of employing people to deliver that water. But as you know, we've got this extraordinary capital improvement grant source. So um, you know, on one hand, it's really exciting, but on the other hand, it's like, well, we got to address this, this day-to-day deficit. We got a study done at the University of North Carolina about three or four years ago, and they pretty much said, with what you guys need to do with your capital, you know, improvement fund, what you guys are doing currently on a day-to-day basis, you're losing fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. That just continues until we can figure out what our rate analysis tells us. Can't really tell us what rate analysis, can't give us our results until we have a good idea on what our staffing situation looks like. So we've been in a little bit of a holdover period, and that's kind of again, coming back to this whole process this year has been a real transition period for, for the city of Trinidad, more than I can ever. Um, so as, as I say here, as much as staff would like to recommend an ambitious outlook to provide the city with new and improved services, I think that we should really focus and continue on restructuring and optimizing, optimizing our current business. Um, discretionary spending is totally on the table. I'll, I'm gonna dive into that in just a second, but um, you know, that's kind of, that this year was water. I think this next coming year is still going to be water. Um, but you know, as far as um anything else goes, I think um, I think just developing a new, a new staff, getting everyone some experience, figuring out where everything is going to land in terms of, are we going to be able to keep a chief water plant operator or not? Is, is this just a short-term thing or are we really gonna, is this going to be in for the long haul? Can can we take these employees on from Coleman? Can we uh develop a strong public works director that can really kind of as, you know, places where Eli are having to kind of drop what we're doing and, and, and fill those roles? Can we get somebody that can really help, help the city meet its objectives uh in the future? I think that's, that's, that would be my thoughts on what good focus would be for the summer. So again, summarizing the progress towards the approval of the draft budget by the twenty-eight, that's kind of what I just did. I'm gonna open up some spreadsheets here and show you some numbers. Uh, let's see. Explain some of the tools used to craft the budget. That's what I'm gonna second and review the water fund preliminarily. Uh, and then here, you know, maybe what you guys have as far as guidance goes. So instead of having this pretty budget here, I could just show you, look at it. I figured I would just let you kind of dive into, to, to my head for the last couple. Um, because we've added, I think, uh, three, this is what we call a payroll oportuement. You can't read this. I don't expect you to. But this is, this is the chart that we uh use to the chart that we use to identify uh, you know, staffing. And, and then this list over here on the left kind of uh shows you uh a list of our employees, one, two, three, four, five, six, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen. In the past, we've had seven. So we've grown this by five. A lot of them are part timers. Uh, so you know, it's, it's not, it's not as exciting as it looks. Um, but it's still, I mean, every person that you hire is somebody you have to train. You have to babysit, you have to watch. You have to really kind of invest your time in to make sure that they uh, you know, took a job for you. Uh, and then there's also associated costs relative to that. And this is what we call the payroll oportuement section of the budget, and it gives us um kind of a, a, a printout, I guess, towards the, the far side here of um in this area. Oops. It kind of spells out the cost of each employee to the city based on every little detail and then spits it out at the very bottom here in a number. That number down here, uh, you know, it's, it's carried through, which it's kind of clunky because I'm showing you presentation in a window, in a window, because that's another computer over there. But uh, and we're learning the bugs on this, but it each employee is uh, has an oportuement of its salary given to each budget category, the general fund, water fund, cemetery. So we're not all just, I'm not just all getting paid by sales tax dollars. You know, I'm getting paid a little bit of water fund money, a little bit of cemetery sales, a little bit of um different revenue sources, and that goes for every employee here with the exception, I think, of the water plant operator, hundred percent. Um, and in this uh spreadsheet, there's several um projections. And this is what we call the general fund administration budget. This is um, this has uh people, staff members, uh consultants included in it. As you can see, um, the attorney's budget is in here. Uh, this is a line item in this budget that's uh unique. Uh, the engineer is not in here because we turned, we moved them over to what we call the public works budget. Uh, the city planner's salary is in here. Um, the columns that you're looking at right now show actual through April thirtieth, our twenty twenty-two budget, and then what we're anticipating for twenty twenty-three. All these numbers at the top here in this uh sage color are basically the, the oportuement of the payroll chart that I showed you carried over to the admin part of the budget. So this admin, general fund admin means that your sales tax, your uh occupancy tax, your property taxes are, are funneled through this fund and paying for everything you see here. Everything from building inspector to the accountant to the auditor uh and then down to what we spent on our T O T allocation. So we budgeted a certain amount of money this last year. The revenue came in short because we budgeted ten percent of that money going to all of the community groups in town. But we came up short last year. We didn't make a hundred fifty thousand dollars like we thought. We actually ended up with an audited figure approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars. So we only are paying out ninety-nine thousand. That's going to change this upcoming year. It's going to be a little lower. I'm budgeting about a hundred thousand dollars in revenue as opposed to what um I think Ms. Robuck put in her uh proposal this year. And had that twelve percent been in tax, it would mean about a sixty-five thousand dollar increase. So um, I'm kind of throwing, just, just giving you a quick preview of what you're seeing right now because this is what you're going to be getting from me. Uh, and you're going to have uh a little over a week, maybe longer, to look at. Because Eli and I have been really diving into these numbers to look to see how uh the city's going to fare, and what our opinion is the city's going to fare. Um, and then uh, and then I'll also give you a summary. But this is sort of like what they say, making sausage. You know, it's not the prettiest process, but this is, these are the tools that we use to identify, you know, where we're at, where we're going, and what we anticipate for next year. There's, there's a couple of other funds. There's uh, so so two oh one is the general fund administrate, and administration budget. That's what they call it. This is our, this is our lease budget. Right? This is our fire department budget. This is what our public works budget looks like. And we've got cops funds. Integrated waste management, which is basically um the budget that we've created based on the franchise fees that we receive from public sanitation that go back out towards sanitation-related efforts, which generally are public works employees because they empty the garbage. We, all the pet waste bags that we purchased that go around town in the little pet waste stations. Uh, this is sort of like a focus, special category that we have. We've got our water fund. Large budget here showing our revenues, where they come in at the top. Uh, this is revenues uh budgeted for in twenty twenty-two, actual through uh April thirtieth, and then I think my budget here is probably about eighty-five. Ready for you guys to look at it depth. We haven't really showed you many numbers yet. So I'm hoping that uh in the next probably uh Wednesday, I'll email this out to the council and you guys can kind of thumb through it, pick through it and look through the categories. Um, all of these categories are in every financial statement that are, that's provided to you every council meeting. All the line items on the left and the account numbers are aligned. So you, you've had an opportunity to see this as we've gone along. I have placed a few uh numbers as projections in some of these categories uh in the middle, which is actual numbers. Um, I've been able to, I can kind of, I have a crystal ball where I can see what's coming. So I'm able to be a forecast what's happening on the right uh column, which is uh what we're going to call the twenty twenty-three budget numbers. And uh, and, and you'll be seeing all these different descriptors. So in each one of these categories, I'll send you the digital copies to you so you can really dive into this if you like, but everywhere there's a red tag.
Yep.
You'll be able to see my thoughts. I mean, if you want to look at it from this step, I don't have to. You don't have to either. But uh, you'll be able to see some of our, uh, some of our notes to each one of these funds. Putting, you know, down here, there's, there's little notes that may mean something, maybe not. But uh, at least you'll have something to base uh more questions on. Cemetery budget, and then we've got a few others. But I guess one last thing. Trying to put together together what I, what looks like to be a summary. So, so without getting into too much incredible detail right at this moment, I'll let you guys. At this point in time, you know, I'm looking at, and you'll get this page from me too, is our 2023 revenues. Versus the expenses from each one of the funds and the total bottom line. And now you'll be able to kind of put that into perspective as to what I'm, what I just explained about how we've been packing money away for the last several years. I say packing money, it's just, it's underspent really. So, so a number like sixty one thousand dollars doesn't necessarily scare me. It might scare somebody who's looking to see how sustainable this can be down the road. But as I mentioned today to Eli and Anton, when they were in the room and I, they were getting a little nervous that we were getting close to the meeting hour and this thing wasn't set up. Right yet, the, the whole hybrid setup. And I said, I'm not worried. Joey's not worried. And Joey wasn't worried, but the same goes for this budget. I would, uh, you know, it's, it's our job as staff to tell you if there's a panic button. You know, and I'm seeing, um, at this point, because of this transition that I explained, because of how we're still feeling out. This, this labor market, we couldn't just get, people were jumping in here to, to get a job. We were, we had to really scratch and pull to get people to work with us. Um, I would be a little more nervous. Uh, I was a little more nervous, uh, six months ago than I am now. Um, although I think this is going to, you know, be a transitional period and seeing, seeing a balance, and this is a very conservative. Negative balance is showing sixty one thousand. Um, I think we're actually going to come even because our sales tax revenues are just. Don't. Uh, at least they're going to probably through the middle of this upcoming year, you know, get our bed tax thing figured out too. That's really going to help us make some forecasts. And we've got, um, three more years of the sales tax increase. Are we in year one after the?
Yeah, point seven five.
Yeah. And that is also another marching order.
I thought we did five years. We did three.
Four, four. Four years. It seems like it's every four years. So one of, that's another big marching order of ours. It's like every four years, there's a, there's a record.
Yeah.
You know, so I can see three years into the future. I can't really see. And I never really can. So when I'm thinking of sustainable staffing, I'm looking at three years. And then Becky, of course, at the last meeting I got, um, in the packet online, I, Becky showed us. The grant payroll allocation, how much money, all this grant money is going to refund back in and offset staff costs. So I, I was really hoping to have something for you to dive into tonight, but, um, the numbers have been kind of overwhelming. Again, it has a lot to do with just line items that are just not, that are just not. Solving piece for the water front, for instance. And, and I think I may have been, this is Kelly who asked me at the last meeting, um, what the. What a, what a typical day in the water department looks like relative to where we're at right now in terms of staffing. Maybe he asked a question about that and, um, I think, uh. Think. Say, we've got, we dove into the reserves this year about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. A one million dollar reserve as a result of this, which could have been worse.
Yeah.
But at this point in time, I would say that that's a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Take healthy estimate of what, what this, what losing Ryan costs the city to have to pivot. Without a wide market of T3 operators. Job. So, so I'm, I mean, like I said, this, this document is about nine, eighty five percent ready to roll. Then I think at the next meeting, and I'll, I'll kind of emphasize this, is that there's, there's some discretionary items and I, I really want to kind of. I think it's time to turn it over to the council because you guys represent the voice of the people. If you've heard anything specific that you want beyond what I'm. He was, uh, like, hold up. Tonight would be a great time to share it so I can weave it into the budget. One last thing, on that note, the private security, I can let. I would say.
Yeah, well Cheryl had brought, uh, Gene from Pacific Coast Security and, uh, we had a meeting with him and just talked to him about. Supplementing our law enforcement because we're unable to get dedicated deputies to the city because they have a shortage of deputies. Uh, so. You know, there's different scenarios, but personally, at least the way I was looking at it was possibly, uh, part time, like 20 hours a week. Just to give some additional presence in the city. Uh, Pacific Coast Security has armed and unarmed officers. And, uh, basically it could be around thirty five dollars an hour, uh, for that. And, you know, we've had like some issues around Saunders Park, uh, you know, in the evenings and so we can ideally pick like certain days and times. That we would like to have, you know, some additional law enforcement presence, uh, in the city. So that's one thing. The other thing was actually dealing with the building itself. Uh, Dick, Fusel Horse had brought to my attention that a few of the windows that are along that side. At, or, or rotting, some of the wood is rotting. And as a result, uh, that, that would need to be changed. Um, and then the estimate I got was probably like around thirty thousand dollars in, in order to do, uh. Actually to change most of what we need to change. Otherwise it could be as high as sixty thousand if we want to change all the windows. Uh, but, uh, but anyway, those are two additional things that are discretionary that we can address. And then since Cheryl was involved with, uh, Gene with Pacific Coast Security, you might want to add something else.
Yeah, thank you. I think you covered it well. I think we just, we're looking at the opportunity to add to our, to save law enforcement. To take care of some trouble spot, a trouble spot, which is kind of over Saunders Park area and the library and so forth. And, um. You know, if you look at the amount that other cities spend on law enforcement fire, it's bigger cities. They spend up to seventy percent of their budget on. Fortunate that we get a lot of our services from the county. So as a small town, we don't need to spend that high a percentage, but our percentage right now. I think this past year's roughly spent thirteen percent. So I think we could probably spend a little bit more of it. But yeah, I, I just did. We really appreciate it.
Okay. So yes, so those are a couple of things that, uh, we can, uh, bring you a little more exact numbers next time that we can consider as part of our budget.
Also, can I share some of that real quick just while we're talking about it so that we can, you know, kind of maybe land on that tonight? Um, the city receives approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or anticipated receiving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, um, cops funding. Which money that comes down from the federal government through others' offices. And, uh, right now, we've, as of today, we received about a hundred and thirty eight thousand. I've had a little. Bit of a, you know, shaky confidence level and knowing everything that's coming, you know, what we're still to be expected, but I'm hoping that we receive the full benefit of that hundred and fifty thousand. It does fluctuate from year to year, but our current sheriff's contract that we just, uh, is that the one that, uh, gets effective July first this year?
Yeah.
So a hundred and fifty thousand, their contractor to the city is a hundred and forty seven thousand. So cops funding, no general funds, no tax dollars are being put towards at this time, city tax dollars, not tax dollars. Uh, go towards law enforcement. So we're really fortunate for that. So in our budget, which I think it's really small to see and see it. But what I've done up here is, um, made some notes in terms of what that means. But, um. So what we're showing is a hundred and fifty five, a hundred and fifty five thousand anticipated. We received a hundred and thirty eight thousand. I'm budgeting next year for a hundred and fifty. It's just, it's, it's an educated guess. Uh, we have actually spent, uh. As of today, a hundred and twenty seven thousand on, on law enforcement. We're anticipated to spend another sixty one thousand this year. And that'll take us just a little bit over our budget, but the bottom line is that we're not expected next year to spend. Maybe have a few thousand dollars in the bank. So, um. Think in the, uh, general, the way it works is that once you spend all the, once we spend all the cops money. We roll over to this budget called the, uh, you know, general fund police budget. And, um, I've anticipated with this line right here as a discretionary expense in alternative private security personnel as per city manager. So there's a little note in this budget that can, uh, be, that number, be about thirty two thousand dollars. As you mentioned, we're, you know, ten, that is not that much spending. That would be the dollars. Sure.
Thank you for that. Uh, questions, comments from the council, including Jack up on the screen. I think Jack is still with us. Uh, any questions, comments for Gabe or, or, uh, Eli?
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to touch you, but just really, yeah, I missed a lot in that. I really appreciate that opening part where you. Let's see what some of the ideas got, but. But I pressed the break, you know, for someone to share it. I'm glad that you're, uh, you're making me feel better. So that's good. But I also think there's a lot of other things that, like you talked about, this building itself, not just the one that, but there's. A lot I think that really needs to be done to make the tech, the city look a little nicer. So I think that's something that could be somehow included in the budget. Being able to, um, fix the hole in front of this, make it. Just a bigger track. Turn that, I think we should look at areas of Trinidad that could, maybe we could help if possible, uh. Improve to, so we went to Zerstom, we're still impressed with the town, the city of Trinidad as well as just the city itself. Some of that take place and that's going to reach out. Right here, you're looking at, looking at things and trying to keep up on.
Yeah, and our public works budget here, um. One of the. We can see, so this is a public works, uh, fund 501. So these green. Highlights are discretionary. And I say discretionary because here's ten thousand dollars, what we call a swap or CCC is the conservation court. We get really behind. We've got some money reserved to where we can access some big help real quick. We didn't utilize that money last year. So it's still sitting in the bank. Ten thousand dollars here for trails committee priorities as per annual trails committee report. Still sitting in the bank and you can see this big blank right here. We haven't spent that money. Uh, and then Jack, to your point right here, the fourteen thousand dollars, this is under a category called, uh, building repairs and maintenance. We budgeted fourteen thousand dollars this year. We've only spent four thousand three hundred seventy three dollars. Thirteen hundred of that was for sort of a deposit for the Tesla power wall. So very little has gone into public building maintenance in this year. And actually in the prior years. So I kept a line item in here of fourteen thousand dollars. It was a carryover from last year. Eli mentioned town hall windows. Um, there's still the ten thousand dollars for the club room renovations, which we've. The council committed last year to kind of continue on until some money's invested in that. But, um, I'll add, I'll, I'll make sure I add another note for that, uh, maybe. I think that's really where having a good, strong public works director, somebody who has, has some experience, which now we're kind of reorganizing. We're splitting the water from the public works a little bit. Um, adding somebody that can lead these projects for us, somebody that can. Get the ball rolling, calling some contractors, getting some bids, uh, maybe even working with Becky on some of our, um. Contract processes. We can't just go hire somebody for fifty thousand dollars. We have to do it by the books. So investing in staff is going to even help us get to that next level hopefully. Get something.
Joe, it looked like you were.
No, I guess it was, um, and I have been, the shortfall on the budget is not huge percentage wise. Um, last year, I think we, I think we had to puzzle our balance going into the year of like fifty one thousand. This year we're saying a hundred and sixteen hundred. So. That is a little bit fair, delta bit, but I hear you that it may, I guess at some point we can talk about other ways that we can make up the shortfall. Probably a good way, possibilities, um, because we're, we've talked about how we can add discretionary spend, but maybe there's some other options there.
And we have in the past had a mid-year budget discussion where we have a better sense after some, you know, the summer TOTs. Uh, to know where we're really sitting. So we, we've done that in the past to, to a mid-year discussion to see if we're, if that sixty thousand is going to be. I wanted to, uh, really impress upon the council the, the value of Becky, not only as an individual who's a very successful grant. Uh, administrator, but the position itself to invest in that position. We wouldn't be able to do. Anything in this city that we're either mandated to or that we want to do without, uh, a very effective grant administrator. So I really want to impress upon. All of us to put our feelers out there to find someone to work full time as, and it is, now I'm having to say it publicly, Becky's replacement. That's a very difficult thing to say, but it's, it's a reality and we, we have a little bit of money in our, in our reserves if need be. But our staffing really has to, we have to benefit from Becky's knowledge. And, and waiting until she retires to replace the grant administrator is not, my opinion is not sound business in any way, shape or form. So I really want to encourage whatever budget planning we do that we, that we continue to invest in the staff needed to make the city. Uh, because we have seen the benefits. I personally have felt it as a, as a vacation rental owner to, to feel the. The benefit of having a dedicated, uh, agenda for to dedicate time to that process. It's never been smoother. And I can say this throughout the whole, throughout the whole city. So I really want to encourage us to consider to maintain investing. And I really appreciate your context, Gabe, that really we have three years. Do the things that we're doing. And that's, that helps me because that's how long that seventy five. Cent or point seven five percent rather tax continues. And that's it. That's a good framework for us to think because if we dig too far, it gets a little bit, uh, squishy. So. I just wanted to make sure that, that we're really, I want to say publicly how much we have benefited from having the staff that we have. You know, to think in that realm. If we stop, if we reduce our staffing, then we reduce our effectiveness. We just need to be able to say that. This was a choice. We're not going to have the, the benefits that we have. Say money that way. So. And we'll get into all the details in twenty eighth. Is that the day that you're looking at?
My goal was to have, I want, I'd like to get you something by the end of next week. So you, the council, maybe not the entire public.
So we have a chance.
Have something to really dug through and then, um, you know, we can field some questions internally and then we'll put something out and pack it and then it will be, you know, fully. Acknowledged now.
And counselors, do you have a preference for a digital versus a paper or both? I would love to have both. Um, if we can get a paper version, just sure it helps to reiterate to, for me anyway, to have the, the thing to hold on to. But I also like the digital so I can look at all your comments. So is that too much of an ask to have?
Not at all, not at all. Summary slide?
Yeah. That's what he was working on right then.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, summary slide. Yeah, sure.
Mr. Tuttle, um, I just want to give you, make sure that you've got a, there you are. Uh, any questions, comments, um? Do you want to?
Nope. Looks, looks really good. Gabe did an amazing job and I'd love to dive in this a little bit more with, uh, paper copy and digital copy as well. So, yeah.
Any public comment on our budget process? We outnumber the public with city staff and elected officials, but seven to one. So. All right. Well, uh, any closing comments regarding this, this budget discussion? Any last minute asks of our, uh, highly capable staff to. Get the twenty eighth up and running.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I don't know if this means anything, but I'm actually grateful that we don't have all the numbers today, because it helped to have one more of these really high level kind of discussions. To, to not, because I'm, I'm distracted by Excel spreadsheets on screen, so if you were really wanting us to focus on. I would just be looking at the numbers and not hearing the space, so I really appreciate the time here to kind of really get ready for next, next. So with that, we will move on to our final agenda item for this evening, the general election calendar and upcoming deadlines. I think.
Paul has a hand.
Oh. Sorry, Paul, I didn't see the little tiny hand up there. There you are, what can we do for you?
Sorry, I, I thought this was the end of the meeting, and I wanted to make a suggestion for the next agenda, but I'll make it at the end of the meeting.
You're so close, we are so close, Paul, we are so close, so. Moving back to our general election update, I believe we were expecting a little more information. For June, I think, Gabe, you were.
We, yeah, we, June, what I'd like, what I'm planning on doing is keeping this at the end of our agendas, that every game moving forward, just so we can. You know, everybody's aware of what's happening, we don't miss any deadlines, but, but I, I was gonna add. Actually, some more information, I'd like to add more information for July, but we. I think with the addition of this agenda item tonight about the resolution for the occupancy tax ballot measure. And the ordinance, we checked those off the list, those were the biggies for June. July, we're going to. First meeting in July, we're basically going to have where it says candidate nomination period opens. That actually opens in, I think it's mid to late July, when the, when the candidate announcement period. Comes up, and then it remains open for about five weeks. So that's where my next announcement would be, a meeting in July. With some concrete dates, basically saying it's time, you know, for the next five weeks. Here's, you can pick up the packet at the, at the city office, and here's, you know, here's some of your deadlines for July. But we, we checked off the list today, the two big ones.
The first reading.
Yeah, the first reading of the, of the ordinance and the resolution to make sure that. And also the second reading's off the list, because they said it's not necessary, because basically the voters are going to be.
Okay, that's the second meeting.
So in our July meeting, I think every, we. Is that early in July, or is it? So it's the twelfth of July.
Twelfth of July, yeah.
Yes, I think the nomination period for candidates will open a week after that, so. At our meeting in July, I'll, I'll make the announcement, you know. Three seats.
Excellent, so we'll just keep, I like that, that this is now a standing item, that's, it's the last agenda, so. Yeah. All right, thank you for that update, I doubt there's any public comment, but we don't have any. Right, then now is a future agenda items. Paul, your hand was up, so I'll go to you first. I believe you were on mute. So close.
I have a request for the city manager, and I also have two requests for two action agenda items. First, for Eli, I request that he do a water cost, water cost analysis comparing. Luffenholz development to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. The Luffenholz development will include the cost of a tier three employee, water treatment, chemicals, and so on and so forth. Compared to what it would cost for water from Humboldt Bay. For action agenda items. I request that the city council. Connect with Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District to. Collect data on the cost of water and a potential hookup. Part of this is time sensitive. If we eventually need to hook up to Humboldt Bay, the cost of water to Trinidad is influenced by the size of the pipe to the rancheria. Which is currently being engineered. The second. Action agenda item is for someone to do some research on a comparative study of the fire resiliency. Between the projected Luffenholz development compared to hooking up to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. And I believe the new member of the Water Advisory Council, Hankinen. Correct me if I'm mistaken, you, was a firefighter, so he may be able to help with that. We need to. Do a deep dive into the data collection of costs of water alternatives to evaluate. Water rates going into the future. And, oh, I forgot to mention before I said all this. It would have been nice to have done all this two years ago. It would have made us better prepared to make the decisions that the city council made, but it's not too late, and I think it's important to do it now. And to get a realistic appraisal, there's all this. Soundbites going on, this would cost that, and this would, and, and so on and so forth, and. We need to, we need to get some facts, we need to calm, and we'll calm down now, but we, we need to. I, I, it's clear what I've requested, I don't need to reiterate.
Thank you for your.
Did you get the message?
Got the message, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
We need a general plan element for consideration. I've, I've lost track, I know we've done three. Maybe four, so whatever the next element that is ready, I don't know, you were at the planning commission meeting?
I was, and I was gonna bring this up as well, and they didn't, they didn't, I think I mentioned it there, but there was something that. Get a takeaway when the timeline.
Okay, Trevor, the last time Trevor was at a meeting, she mentioned that she was close, but then. It's been three meetings and we've been focusing a lot on budget, so we kind of tabled it for a minute, so if we could.
I, I think there's one on their agenda for tomorrow night.
Excellent.
Circulation.
Circulation, excellent, so.
I think the mission envisioned the first part is done a while ago.
Oh, yeah, that's. I remember doing it, but.
Do you?
I don't trust my.
Which one?
The mission of the, just the whole, the.
Yeah, the general plan, mission envisioned the first, you know, section, introduction, basically.
It sounds like circulation at least is, is on the docket for tomorrow, and, and. Anyway, whatever is ready, something, I would really like to see something ready for July, because we, we had a good head of steam. With reviewing elements and then. The water plan and a lot of other things came up, so we could get that back, that would be great. Did you have any other?
No, that was.
Jack, do you have anything that you wanna bring to the council for discussion? Sorry, Mr. Tuttle, I gotta.
Jack's. No, I don't today, thank you.
Uh, Jack to the left.
Either Jack.
Either Jack. Any other, Gabe?
While Joey and I are here, and I guess we have the full staff in the room. And this is kind of a, a question to Jack Tuttle, too, does anybody have any feedback to share? Like, is, is there any part of the, especially Zoom participants, hard for us, hard, hard for you to hear? Us, is there any sound or visual issues on your end that you can share with us that we can work on for the next time? Or even feedback from?
It is, for, for what it's sake, for what it's worth rather, as a facilitator of the meeting, I found it to be incredibly useful. To be able to do this back and forth and out in the, in the crowd, so.
For me, I heard everyone pretty well except for Cheryl, I think her microphone was pointed the other direction, and she was facing you guys, that, that was the only correction.
Microphone, I plus it probably, thanks for the feedback.
He can't hear you, so.
Yeah, thanks for the feedback.
It's true, we've always had these microphone issues where people forget that it's really for the recording, right? And it's also for now for the Zoom land. Paul, did you have some feedback on the quality of the meetings? Were you able to hear us?
Yeah, it was fine, did, did any members of the public actually go to the civic building?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're packed, we have three members of the public. If summer is, I'll, I'll be honest, summer is usually low enrollment, or low attendance rather, for, for council meetings, so. Yeah, the budget's not as, doesn't draw as many people in, even though it's really a critical piece, it just doesn't draw the, the same. Attendance that other, other items do.
It's a little bit easier, just, excuse me?
Go ahead.
It's a little bit easier to hear you and certainly to see you when it was just all video. Because your head is about a quarter inch high.
I've been called a pinhead before, but whatever, that's fine. Well, I wanna try to, I mean, I can't believe I'm saying this, I really want to encourage everyone to come to the town hall, right? I mean, it's what we're here for, but I'm glad that we have the option for folks that want to stay home. And thank you very much, Joey and Gabe and Anton and Jennifer and Eli for taking a test run with this and making it work. It's quite impressive, this little array of. Yeah. Well, at one point, we were talking about a possible, a proposal rather, of seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars, came in for under, under G on that. So I think, yeah, I really want to commend you. That?
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
I'm gonna wait two and a half years to beat this thing on the table.
Well, you know, so, so, you know, we can always have recommendations for future.
Oh, yeah.
But ideally, you know, the council would give direction as to what to pursue and so on and so forth. And as you could tell, we're working on the budget, everything else, you know, and, and I'm working on the water plant, trying to make that transition. Those things are taking up a lot of time overall for staff. So what I'm getting at is with this Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. We have considered it in the past, council has decided to have it tabled for three to five years to wait until the Trinidad Rancheria hopefully has a lineup here. The study that was done indicated that the line that was planned for Trinidad Rancheria would provide more than enough water than what the city needs. So therefore, we don't have to determine the size of the pipe anymore. So therefore, I think that this part, you know, we shouldn't be wasting our resources on this, you know, just keep moving with what we have to do with the water plant. What we have to do with the watershed itself, and then also. You know, we, we can seek whatever funding we need when that day comes, when the water is available. Up in, in our area with the rancheria. And, and we had indicated three to five years, so we can revisit it at that time, so at least that's my suggestion.
Agreed.
I mean, if in our travels, we could, if on our travels, we could figure out whether or not the water tank replacement would be necessary in either case. Because that was one of the things we did the water advisory, we did a report, I did a little short report, I didn't know the answer to that question. So, but that could be something, one of the special reports.
Yeah, and, and we don't want to get into the discussion of the agenda item, but. Definitely hear what you're saying, Eli, and we will always take input from folks as we, just to remind folks with that. Jack and Eli and myself meet every Monday to kind of discuss the direction that we're going and whatnot, so we'll take any input on agenda.